I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would welcome the public to the meeting. And Mr. Latchmore, would you take a roll call attendance, please?
Trustee Pelkey.
Here.
Trustee Inard.
Here.
Trustee Southland.
Trustee Arnold.
President.
Mayor LaBoutte.
Here. Nobody has signed up to address the board, so we will go to... Everybody should have in their packet the minutes of the July seventeen, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. I think everybody should have the chance to review that, and if there's any changes or additions, I'd like to have them now. If not, then I need a motion to accept those minutes as printed.
I'll take a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor of accepting the July seventeen, two thousand twenty-three minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Bills, Mr. Letourneau, the treasurer.
We have two additions this evening. First one is Conica Minota Premier Finance. It's the copier-lease for the office and the library. That's four hundred dollars and twenty cents. And the other one is Dragoons Farm Equipment, six ninety-eight oh-two, various parts for the generator, a whole bunch of different filters, belts for the lawn tractor, so on and so forth.
Thank you. If there's no questions on those, the additions, plus the regular bills, I would like a motion to accept the bills as read.
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Correspondents, Mr. Latchmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do have three things for correspondence. The first item on the agenda is a letter from Steve Merchant. I'd like to acknowledge that Mr. Merchant is present at the meeting. Mr. Merchant, would you still want me to read the letter on your behalf? Yeah. Okay, thank you. So, the letter is addressed, Mr. Mayor, Village Board Members, and Mr. Administrator. My name is Steve Merchant, and I am not only a lifetime resident of Ross's Point, but I am a co-founder of the Samuel D. Champlain Center Stage and past co-chair of the Friends of the Stage for ten years. I am now retired. A couple of weeks ago, I received a very upsetting phone call from one of the committee members of Friends of the Stage. She notified me that the chandelier that I had requested from the committee to be put up on the stage in memory of my mother was taken down without my knowledge. Please allow me to explain the story behind the chandelier. When my mom was living, the chandelier hung in her dining room, and when she passed away, I inherited it. I spoke with the committee to see if they would mind if I donated the chandelier to the village to be put up in her memory. My mom was very involved with music, as most of my family is. The committee as a whole agreed to have the chandelier, that the chandelier should be hung in the middle of the stage. So the village electric crew installed the chandelier. To my surprise, that phone call telling me that they had taken it down without my knowledge and that they had put up some kind of light and ceiling fan, stage lighting was installed earlier, and I'm sure there must be an alternative spot for the fan rather than where the chandelier was. The committee members told me that they wanted to either... The committee members told me that they wanted to either bring it back to me or ask me how they wanted to dispose of it. The reason I'm writing this letter to you is to request that the chandelier be put back where it was on Center Stage. I have twenty-nine combined years of volunteering in the Village of Ross's Point, nine years as a scout master for the Boy Scout Troop forty-two of Ross's Point. I began the Kids' Day, Fourth of July celebration for the Village of Ross's Point, and worked it for ten years, which is still going. I stopped volunteering Kids' Day so I could begin duties as co-founder of the stage, which I did for ten years before retiring. This does not count for a lifetime member of the Ross's Point Fire Department and Rescue Squad. I feel that my time served as a volunteer should more than qualify my request to you to please consider putting the chandelier back where it belongs in my mom's memory. While the chandelier was there, I had many compliments on how nice it looked, and when people asked me the story behind the chandelier, they seemed to be very pleased. As a final request, I ask if you should accept my request and have the chandelier reinstalled in the future prior to any talk of removing the chandelier to please notify either myself or family member, or one of my family members. I want to thank you in advance for your consideration of this request, and I await to hear from you. Thanks, Steve Merchant. Steve Merchant, co-founder of the Samuel D. Champlain Center Stage and retired co-chair, Friends of the Stage.
Thank you.
So, if I could just add something to this. So, what actually happened is the committee for the stage approached me as the administrator and asked me about installing a ceiling fan with a light kit. And when they approached me, I indicated to them that I had no issues installing the ceiling fan and the light kit, but they needed to get consent with Mr. Merchant who donated the chandelier.
And I'll stop you right there. You called me and informed me of that, up to that point. You informed me that the stage committee had requested some electrical work to be possibly done by an electrical person, and they wanted to change the chandelier out for a light as well as a combination light fan. And I indicated to you that as long as everything was checked out, that the village should go ahead and do it like they have in the past. So I'll let you continue.
So, I mentioned that to the committee, and they said that they were going to take care of it. We installed the new light and ceiling fan. I called the committee of the stage member, and I had them come down and inspect the installation to make sure that they were, it was accepted. I indicated to them that the chandelier was in the bag and that they could return it to Mr. Merchant, and it was at that time I was informed that he had been notified of the situation.
And that's what I know. And I'll just add to it. Obviously, I wasn't the mayor when this stage committee was formed. The only thing I've been able to do is piecemeal some information together. And what my information has led me to believe is that in the past, the village... This, let me back up. This stage was built on some grant money that was... I think it was, what was her name? She used to work for the village, one of the ladies.
Samuel D. Champlain. It was funds from the Samuel D. Champlain.
With the lady that played for the grant was Jerry Favreau. That's the one I'm looking for. Anyway, and I think it was somewhere around thirteen-five or twelve, or somewhere around twelve-five.
Fourteen thousand.
But anyway, somewhere along the line, after the stage was erected, the stage itself was physically turned over to the village. And my understanding, from that point forward, the committee has had fundraising activities and whatever else they could do to raise money for, sell tickets for shows or whatever. And this money was used to buy whatever they wanted for additions or upkeep of the stage. And if there was some upkeep or additions to the stage, then whether it required the village work crew or the electrician from the village, we would provide that service when the administrator was contacted by someone on the committee. And from my understanding, the same thing occurred this situation. And that's when, I think it was Ms. Mayor contacted the administrator, Mr. Latchmore. Mr. Latchmore contacted me, and that's when I found out that this is the way it works. I said, "As long as everything is consistent, then go ahead and fix it." And that's what happened. And that's why we're here today. If anybody has anything to add, I'm willing to listen. But the bottom line is, as far as I know, and as far as I'm going to go on the premise, that the village owns the stage, but as far as any additions or subtractions from that stage, that the committee that now stands, or stands in the future, will make the decisions on that stage going forward. And the only thing the village will do will supply the manpower. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Mr. Administrator?
No.
Okay.
Can I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
As chairman of the stage committee for ten years, anytime, excuse me, anytime anything was added, such as the sign or anything to do with the stage, the dressing room, anything, we had to ask permission from the village. They owned the stage. It belonged to the state, or they belonged to the village. Anything that belonged to the village. It was turned over to the village. The handicap ramp, anything we added to that stage, we had to ask permission ahead of time from the village before we put it on there. We did not just do it and then that was it, and the village crew put it on. We had to come to the village and get permission. So, that's wrong in that sense. It wasn't, "We got the village crew to put it on and all that." We had to come to the village and ask them permission. You guys owned the stage and everything with it. So, I wanted to correct you on that one.
Is anybody on this board, obviously before I was here, have anything that they know about this different than I do?
No, I agree with him. I mean, and apparently they did ask the village permission before.
And I could tell you another example. When we first built the stage, there was a problem. The first year, it had sunk in one corner. And I bet he can tell you, I think he was on the board, and I'm not sure about... Brian was too, or he was part of the village, had sunk in one corner. And the mayor then, I won't mention names, had given a statement that, "Tear the stage down, demolish it." And we got wind of it. We didn't know about that. And he was going to have it torn down because it had sunk in one corner. Thank God for Mr. Pelkey, right there. God bless him. He said, "No, I'll step in there, we can fix it." And he did. And he brought it, jacked it up, or whatever he did, and he got it fixed. Because the mayor had given the thing, the statement, "Tear it down." And we had put a lot of money into it then, the first year. And the committee can tell you, the ones that were on the committee then. He was going to tear it down. And he got it fixed, and it's still going now. For whatever problem it was, Brian can tell you, he's the one that got it fixed and brought it up. The mayor made the decision. So when they say that the village didn't have anything to do with it as far as the stage goes, wrong. It did. And everything that was done with that stage, we got permission right along, everything. The sign, the handicap ramp, the dressing room. When we did something, we came to the village and said, "Okay, if we do this?" Yes, we raised the money, but we came to you and said, "We're getting construction done. Can we do this?" And then they okayed it. And then we went ahead and did it. I can tell you that.
That's what I say. The reason why you had to come to the village, to make sure that it was safety, or like the stage or whatever, or the dressing room and stuff like that, to make sure that it was done correctly and stuff.
Right, but it's still, we gave all of that to the village. It's on village property. It belongs to the village.
Right, it belongs to the village. That's why you got to come to the village to take and ask for permission. Like if you were going to change something down there, change a door or something, we don't want you to put the door in with only one hinge on it, so we have to take a look at it.
So you do have a say in the stage and what the stage committee does.
We have a say as far as it's done according to safety standards and according to whatever procedures we have to go as far as whether it's installing a light, whether it's a door, like Trustee Arnold said, or anything else. That's the only thing that I believe that we have a right to say about. The committee has always approached the village, from what I could see, on any changes or additions. And with all due respect, Mr. Merchant, you are no longer on the committee. These people are on the committee. They came to the village administrator. They talked to the village administrator as a representative of the committee. You are no longer on that committee. I understand what you have, all these years of starting it and all that. But the people who now have control of that fundraising and any changes they want be made to the stage are these people who are on the stage committee now. They approach, just like they have in the past, the administrator, and then we as a board decide whether we can go forward with it.
Okay, now let me say something. They also told the administrator that they, it's taken care of. I was notified. Wrong. Two weeks afterward, after the fact, somebody called my house and told me about it. Now, is that right, that they're lying to their administrator? Come on!
I'm not saying that what you just said is right. All I'm saying to you is, once again, I'll repeat myself. One of the committee members, I believe it was Miss Triggett, Mrs. Triggett, approached the administrator. Said they wanted to exchange the chandelier for a fan and a dimming light. He went to me, I said, "What have we been doing, done in the past?" I said, "Okay, the money was paid and raised by the committee. We, as a village, have offered our services to fix something, replace something, and that's what we did here." The administrator contacted Miss Triggett, and we went forward. Whether Miss Triggett contacted you or not, that's not my problem. Miss Triggett is on the committee. She approached the administrator. That's an internal problem between you and her, not with me as the mayor and you and her. That's not my business. That's between you and Miss Triggett and the committee. That's not my business as the mayor.
Oh, so that makes it okay to step on the little guy who donated twenty-nine years? To just step on him aside because that's okay? We'll just step on him and do what we want, right?
That's not my decision. That's not my decision. Mr. Merchant, I'm not going to argue with you. That's not my decision. The decision was made by the committee. They approached the administrator. The administrator approached me as the mayor. The administrator dealt with Mrs. Triggett. She said, she is the committee spokesperson, I believe, at this point. He followed her direction. She got the light. We replaced the light with one of our electricians, and that's the way it's going to be.
Okay, go along with you, John. I'm not going to argue. Go ahead.
Can I just ask a question? So, of the committee, why did you feel at this point in time that you need to remove the chandelier?
Because they, we needed a fan. Because the first meeting we had, the first concert, the musicians were up there doing this with their kleenex and their handkerchiefs. It was hot in there, and that's why we decided on it.
So one fan is going to cool these guys down?
Well, it should.
So why couldn't you have put, why couldn't you have put two fans up on the side of it? See, you know, the only problem I have is, like John said, it's not really our concern. I guess this is just more...
And that's why I'd be very careful getting involved.
No, no.
As far as I'm concerned, it's internal between these people.
Right. I'm just concerned that, okay, so, say, Mayor, you donate a plaque to the school.
They can take it down anytime they want.
Right, but it's a dedication.
They've given all their...
Okay, just like, just like somebody donated some benches to the school. And we remodeled it the last three years. We called them up, we asked them if they wanted them back or what they wanted.
Well, that's what Nancy did, and she called names and everything else. That's what she did. She called Steve and told him that the fan had been put up, and did he want it back? The chandelier.
After the fact?
It was going to come down. And our, because of our meeting we had, we were going to take it down because first of all, you say, "Why don't you put two on the side?" First of all, this isn't, we went to, we ordered, when we ordered it, we talked to the guy who sells them. Whatever, he told us this would be great. It worked. It's got, we had the two side fans, the portable fans, but that blew everything all over the place, and it was, it got hot up there. The first night we had that, the guys were like, "This is great." And it was, it cooled, yes, it did cool. It was a big, it's a good-sized fan. Plus, you have the light that we don't have. Those are can lights in the front, and all they do is show color on the band. They don't give you any light at nine o'clock at night when those guys are trying to tear down, and we can't see squat down there. So, we figured by putting a light in the middle, it would do that. It's almost like we did it for the reason of, to renovate, to upgrade the stage a little bit, to make it look like a stage again. That's why we did it. And we decided as a committee.
Okay. This didn't go on all afternoon or all night. I'm not going to allow it to. But my thoughts on this are, A, I can see where Mr. Merchant's coming from. He's got some hurt feelings, I understand that. But the bottom line is, Mr. Merchant, whether they contacted you first and told you they were going to take it down or replace it, you wouldn't have been happy. Whether they contacted you after they took it down and replaced it, you wouldn't have been happy. You wanted it to stay up. So my point being is, you're no longer on the committee. They contacted the village, they're on the committee. We provided them with the service to replace it. Whether you agreed with it and they contacted you right away, you would have disagreed with it. And the thing would have come down anyway. And it wouldn't have mattered. I'm not saying, if they didn't contact you only after the fact, it wasn't right. I disagree with that. But I had no control over that. That's between you and the committee, not me as the mayor and this board. That's a sad fact, if it happened that way, but there's nothing I can do about it.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Have you had other things donated for people in their memory to the village?
That I have to check. Right off the bat, Mr. Merchant, I would have to check. I can't, I don't want to give you a good answer or a bad answer. I would be misleading you. I have no idea. I would say, off the top of my head, common sense tells me that there's probably, people have donated. When I go to the welcome center, I see in the welcome center donated by so-and-so pieces of fireman's equipment or a piece of railroad equipment, yes. So I would say from that aspect, yes. But as far as this situation, it's a little different from that situation. But my point being is, in my opinion, the stage committee has always represented the stage as far as fundraising and any type of changes or addition that had to be made. And they approached the administrator like they've done in the past. "I know you didn't like it. I know that chandelier means a lot to your mother." I knew your mother. I used to be the Meals on Wheels. I liked your mother, but that has nothing to do here at this meeting, what happened about the chandelier. The bottom line is, they are on the committee, you're not. They made a decision to change this, and that's what we have to live with. Whether you like it or not, that's what happened. That's between you ladies and Mr. Merchant. That's nothing to do with the village.
There again, just one last thing, and I don't want to go back and forth, but... I'll go back to that first year when they had damage, and the mayor made a decision there. You have the chance to make this decision, but you're just brushing it away instead of making a decision.
Well, what you're telling me is hearsay, and I have no direct knowledge of what you're telling me.
Okay, let me say this. For ten years as chairman, nobody complained at all of bands that played there and performers of any heat or anything else, and they had two big fans. They could have done an alternative fan in each corner and put lighting. I'm going to ask this...
What they decided to do was, in the view of their responsibility as a committee and their authority, I cannot say what they did was right or wrong. They are on the committee, Mr. Merchant. They have the responsibility for making decisions as far as fundraising and what goes on with that stage. They have approached the administrator, which has been done in the past, and this is what happened. Whether you agree with it or not, I can see where you're coming from, but at the end of the day, nothing has been deviated from what's in the past.
But even though they lied to them, they did not contact me to find out how I would feel? They went ahead and did it anyway, and did their dirty work? That's okay?
I understand if they did not...
Right, and that's okay?
If they weren't truthful to the administrator, that's between you and them. I have no idea when they contacted you. It's hearsay, once again. You're telling me one thing, I don't know what Mr...
Ask them, they're right there. Ask them. They're right here in front of the whole door. Ask them.
I was not aware.
And the public can know.
I never heard that we were supposed to contact Steve before. Give it back to him, obvious. But I never heard that we were supposed to contact Steve.
It was suggested, but we just didn't, I mean, we would, I know you, I never remember really saying to you that we have to go tell him what we're, because like the mayor said, whether, if we went and asked him, we'd say no anyway. I mean, I know that. And, but the thing is, we just, we just made a decision to better the stage. That's what we did. And people did complain about the heat in there.
Because if you remember, Penny, what I said is that I don't want the mayor, or the village board be involved with that.
Right, and you shouldn't have been.
Chandelier coming down.
This should have just been, like he said, a committee. We did it, and we upgraded the stage. We offered it back to him nicely. We said, "Do you want it back?" And it was going to be back, and it was just a horrible, horrible gesture on what was said to her over the phone like that, when she was just trying to say that we want to give you this back, which we still do. It's there, it's ready to go. End of conversation.
Okay, okay, well, you talk about this a lot. Does anybody on this board have anything else they want to say?
I don't.
Mrs. Baker would like to say something.
Mrs. Baker?
I'm glad you're here, Steve, because I'd like to make, I'd like a procedure on how we can return the chandelier to you. I'd like that settled tonight.
I don't know. I'm going to think about it.
We don't want to...
I am highly insulted at the committee. I spent ten years of my life with that stage.
So did I.
And I'm going to tell you, when I retired, the reason I retired, my wife got out the year before, and I want it publicly known, is you three. We couldn't take you three anymore. That's it.
Okay, that's it. We're not getting into personal matters.
And I want to say goodnight to the board. I'm sorry. I apologize if I insulted any of you. Twenty-nine years I wasted my life, I'll tell you what. Thank you for nothing. Thank you very much. Good night.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you four guys have been put through this. I'm embarrassed. I hope this isn't, she had to take the gruff. And I'm sorry, I hope this is not going to be on TV.
Can I ask you a question? How many members are on the committee?
There's another member, and he agreed with us.
So unanimous of the four members?
Four people to do with fan. And then he brought it up. He's the one that brought it up.
Okay, that's just a question I have.
Mr. Roberts, Mr. Roberts come to me and asked me, he said, "We want to put up a fan down to the stage." And I, in the center. I said, "Okay. Why don't you take and put two fans, like Dale said? Why don't you put two fans?" And he said, "I'll ask the committee," or whatever. I don't know, or if he did or not, I don't know. And I said, "Well, two fans would be better than one, you know? Center them off or whatever." But other than that, that's all I know about it, so. I didn't even know that there was a chandelier in there.
All I'm going to say is, and I hope this doesn't inflame anybody, but at the end of the day, I'll use myself. I have thirty-three years as a judge in the town of Champlain. I have sixteen years for the judge in the village of Ross's Point. I have eight years, I started the senior housing in Ross's Point. I have four years as, or three years as the mayor in the village of Ross's Point. I have worked on various committees throughout the county. But I don't, once I'm off them, I don't have a lifetime membership to these places, these people. And I don't have a right to tell the town of Champlain and the judges how to run their courts anymore just because I have thirty-three years. Once I retire, once you're done, you no longer have a say. Everybody appreciates what you've done for them, I hope. And same thing like Mr. Merchant. I appreciate the time and the effort he did and put in for bringing this stage along with a bunch of other people to the village of Ross's Point. But at the end of the day, when Mrs. Rascal, Mrs. Baker, Mrs. Triggett gets off it, they don't have a lifetime say on what's going to happen to that thing anymore than Mr. Trustee Pelkey or Trustee Arnold has a right-time control over this board or myself as the mayor being the mayor once. That doesn't work that way. And I'm not going to get into this anymore, but that's common sense thinking, and that's what we have to proceed here. And that's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
And thank you, ladies, for clarifying it.
Us three people do the stage. When you see the flowers, the stage, the museum, you see these, you see us.
We appreciate, we appreciate all that you...
And it's ongoing.
We appreciate what everybody has done, and I'm just sorry that it's come to this. It's too bad, but we have to move on.
And Steve has done a great job as far as women's volunteers. You can't take that away from him.
No, what Mr. Merchant has done is well-appreciated. His son has contributed to the stage, Mr. Merchant has, everybody has, you ladies have. It's been a concerted effort by a lot of people, and let's leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Have a good night, please.
Have a good night, please.
Mr. Latchmore, uh, continue with your correspondence, please.
So, I had correspondence, um, with a gentleman, his name is Tyler Mitchell. And he works for a company, their, their base is out of Pennsylvania. And they're called Resource Environmental Solutions. They are one of the largest restoration companies in the country. They're currently looking for approximately ten acres of land near Ross's Point. And what they do is they design and implement a wetland restoration site. It's gonna be zero cost to the village. The site that they're looking at is the property, the wetlands right on the other side of, um, the sewer plant. The seventeen acres. And it helps enhance, um, wildlife. And this afternoon, uh, Trustee Southwick came in the office and I showed him, um, a video that this company does, because they've done it all around the country. And, um, it seems to be quite impressive for what they do, but, it's, like I said, it's zero cost to the, uh, to the village. Um, it's a legitimate company, and, um, they just wanted to know if it would be something that the village would be interested in their, um, in their services.
So what do you need from me and the board?
Your approval to, uh, to have them come up and look at it and start doing the restoration of the wetlands.
Any questions on what the administrator just said and read?
Only one thing on the wetland out there. If they do any digging, we got the sewer pipe that runs down through there.
I mean, and if it's wetlands.
They have to get permission from the state, don't they? Yeah, they do all, they do all that through D E C. I mean, if they're doing any digging, they're gonna have to go through dig save.
I would assume this company gets all the necessary permits from D E C or the, or Environmental Protection Service or whatever.
What kind, what kind of restrictions are they gonna have on us? So, say we need, say we need. Right, so, say we need to expand the, or put a new sewer plant up and we need to use that land. Is this gonna be like a forever thing, or is this?
I mean, I just wanna know what the board's stake is on it before we get too far involved in it.
I, I'm, I don't, I don't know, I, I vote no, but, whatever.
I'd like to see an outline of.
Yeah, I'd like to see a little more information and.
Yeah, I think, uh, Trustee Menard told me something. Before we commit to something of that nature, I think we should see how impacts of any future expansion of our sewer plant, what restrictions it may or may not cause us going forward. But it, in, in, in theory, it sounds like a damn good idea, but if, if it ties our hands to any extent, then.
Usually wetlands you can't touch, can you?
Well, you usually have the.
You're restricted what you can do now, but it's classified as wetlands.
You can do what?
It's restricted use, it's classified as wetlands right now, to, um, to invite them to the con- conservation department. So Nick has a copy of the map, where it's located.
So what they're proposing is to enhance the sweatlands?
Right, for wildlife.
Cause it can bet, never be used anyways.
This blue area right here.
That's what they're, that's what they're indicating, right.
Okay.
Sounds like they wanna take.
This blue area right here.
Right, what a costly village it is.
Blue area, it's off close to our school.
I, I think, I think to be on the safe side, I think we should, Mr. Latchmore, I think to be on the safe side, we're gonna table this until we find out some additional information. See if we're gonna have any restrictions, once, once this land is, is turned over. And, and, uh, from wetlands. And then we can always bring it up at a future meeting.
So do you want them to submit an offer and, and contract for review, or, that might give you more information?
I didn't quite hear that.
It says, and here it says that they would have, be happy to submit an offer and a contract for your review. Cause they're gonna pay the village to do the, do the restoration of the property.
But I guess, if I understood you correctly, Dale, he's, if they, if they do this work, is it gonna restrict us for future expansion?
That I, I don't know.
Well, well, before, I think before we, uh, do a contract or go forward on it, I think that's a question that we should know. Do you all agree?
Yeah, definitely.
I'd like to see more information of, of their proposal.
Just to see if there's any type of, once this company does this work, if there's any type of restrictions on the village using this property moving forward.
I, I mean, I'm just asking to send us what their contract would be, it's not legal mining until it's agreed by all parties, because they're gonna pay the village to, to do the restoration of the wetlands.
And, yeah, ask them to put in there what restriction we have.
I think we need an inform, more information, make an informed vote.
That's often close to our school.
Exactly.
I mean, if we have a spill or something, I just.
Thank you. Any, anyone else have anything to say on that?
I'll just add that it, it definitely seemed like a promising and definitely beneficial to our village overall, but like I agree with everyone else, we have to have something in writing, to, even if it's just an outline of what they'll do and then how it restricts us.
How it impacts the village, that's correct.
Getting things in writing is, is key.
Yeah, exactly. So you'll find out that information afterwards, Mr. Latchmore?
I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Very good, thank you. Anything else?
The last thing that I have for correspondence is, um, World of Hurt, um, professional wrestlers reached out to me at the village office, asking if they could possibly rent the civic center for a, um, professional wrestling, wrestling match in the month of September. So it would probably be on a Sunday, it would be a one-day event. And I mentioned to them that I would have to get board approval, and if the board would approve it, the cost for the, um, one-day event would probably be two thousand dollars for the rental of the civic center.
We've done this before.
Yes, yes, it's been done before.
Yeah, I don't see why we, why not? I mean, they need a motion to do it? I'll make a motion that we.
Just a minute, Dale, I think they have, they had a restriction on that, that they can make sure that they have insurance.
Right.
In case somebody gets hurt here or whatever, that is not liable for the village.
Right.
Right, so they're.
They would turn the insurability certificate over to you, Mr. Administrator, for your review?
Just like any other.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and, yes.
Perfect.
So, uh, yeah, I'll make a, an emotion that we allow the World of Hurt Wrestling Association, whatever, um, to use the rec center.
I'll second.
Want to take a roll call vote on that, Mr. Latchmore?
Okay. Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte?
Aye, the ayes have it. Anything else, Mr. Latchmore?
That's all I have, thank you.
I have, uh, a couple quotes for the fire department roof. One is for fifty-six thousand, and one is for seventy-two thousand, that's from, uh, Nollet's Metal Roofing and Supply. The difference is shown what they were doing between the two figures. In my opinion, um, I think we're better off to go with the fifty-six for the additional sixteen thousand for what we're getting basically another one inch of insulation for. I, I don't think it's, it's worth it on the village's part, but I'm waiting to hear if any trustee has to say anything in this regards.
Uh, yeah, I agree. I don't see where they're giving us sixteen thousand dollars.
It basically looks, basically it looks to me in the first one, they're gonna, the, um, leave the old roof on and just put it over. The second one, they're tearing off, uh, a certain amount of the roof that's pre-existing, and then putting another insu- insulation and putting the metal roof on. And I think with the existing roof being there, with the insulation is, if we put it right over, I think we're gonna gain the R factor or be close to it anyway.
Right, the only thing that they're gonna be carrying off is the rubber. They're not gonna take the insulation off, they're gonna add another layer of insulation, so. Um, nobody knows, there's at least two layers, so we end up with three layers of insulation, so I think we'd be better off.
It's gotta be towed right now.
Right, it's gotta be towed.
They're not gonna take any out.
So the difference in price between fifty-six thousand and seventy-two thousand is kind of a no-brainer.
Southwick?
I'm assuming the twenty-five-year warranty is applicable to both bids?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's the only question I had.
Trustee Arnold, any questions?
If, if they take the rubber off, and the lea- the roof been leaking for the last three, four years, that insulation is, I'm assuming is pretty wet underneath there or something.
I think it's, it's sheet insulation bedding, like the styrofoam.
Oh, it's that, uh, solid.
Tellytex.
Solid pour one, yeah, the one that soaks up water.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Well, that would probably have to be reviewed.
That's what there was at school.
Yeah.
He said at school they left, they left the old one and it went over.
Pretty surely they would.
But until they, they opened it up, I mean, and then if we have to, if the, all the insulation has to be taken out, then we'll have to.
Right.
Maybe have a, a special board meeting and.
And that's what the old journal we got.
Right, but until you open that roof up, you really don't know what's going on.
No.
But the insulation could be like brand-new under there.
It could be just, could be just one spot to where they gotta cut.
Yeah.
A two-by-two spot out where the hole was and.
Okay.
So what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I think we ought to go with the fifty-six thousand one.
Do I have a second on that, to go with the fifty-six thousand dollar bid?
Yeah, one second.
Mr. Latchmore, take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte?
Aye, the ayes have it, so we're gonna go with the, uh, fifty-six thousand dollar quote from Nollet's Metal Roofing and Supply. The thing I have is, we have signed the new youth program agreement with the town of Champlain and the village of Champlain. And the, uh, uh, new agreement, well, the town will be paying forty percent of the program, the village of Champlain and the village of Ross's Point will be paying thirty percent of the program. And it's my understanding that the, uh, town of Champlain will handle the payroll for the coordinator for this program, is that right, Mr. Latchmore?
That's correct.
So, uh, I just need the vote, uh, the board to raise a motion to, uh, agree with this youth program agreement. If there's no questions, then I would need someone to make a motion.
I make a motion.
Go ahead, Dale.
I make a motion that we, uh, agree with the town of Champlain and the village of Champlain for the youth agreement.
I'll second that.
Do we need a roll call for that, Mr. Latchmore?
We should do one.
Yeah.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte?
Aye, the ayes have it, so agreement has been ratified between the three municipalities. And, uh, last thing I have is, it's my pleasure to announce that we've, we're able to find a electrician, for our electrical department, is, is Mr. Dylan Chaffey. Mr. Chaffey was interviewed by myself, Trustee Arnold, uh, and, um, he, he was deemed acceptable. Any questions on Mr. Chaffey?
Oh, you gotta vote to hire him?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
You have to vote on hiring of him?
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do, make a motion, we need a motion, if there's no questions, then I need a motion that we hire Mr. Chaffey. We'll take a roll call vote on that, Mr. Latchmore?
Need a motion?
I make a motion to hire him.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte?
Aye, and on behalf of the village and the board, I wanna welcome Mr. Chaffey aboard. He's gonna be a welcome addition, uh, to our electrical department. And that's all I have, um, Trustee Arnold?
Uh, yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Cooper on the property of, on Pratt Street by the railroad station, Mrs. Yards Park property. Can that, have you done anything about the long grass there or whatever?
We have contacted, including the, myself, all of us, the mayor included, we've contacted everybody about it, and it's still in the county's hand. They say the county's hands, John, or it's in between the Medicaid people.
Well, my, my understanding, and, and the administrator can correct me if I'm wrong, the phone calls, we're able to get some information, the, the property owner is still in control of the property. It hasn't been turned over to the county, or the county hasn't assumed that property for taxes or anything else. But my understanding is that the individual who owns that property is now, uh, in some type of, uh, convalescent home.
She's deceased.
Or is she deceased?
Two years ago.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know, I did not know that.
Well, that's what I've been trying to contact those people, and Sally Smith was nice enough to, uh, do the, do the, do the work that she was here.
See, I was under the impression that the young lady who owned the property was in a convalescent home, not, not deceased.
It was Judy, uh, I can't think of her last name, but anyway.
I know what you mean.
She's deceased.
Okay.
Daughter, did the daughter take it over?
Her daughter doesn't want anything to do with it, I got a letter from her in my office, I contacted her.
Okay.
Oh, then I, I backed up the bus, I, I thought the, the mother had turned over the property to the daughter, and that the daughter was the one in the home, and she still owned the property. But it's still in the mother's name, I, that's what you found, that you found out, okay. Okay.
And I've contacted both of, both, both you, and it's, uh, which is the, one of the Medicaid people, his money's over there, and, and something else was paying for her care and things, and, and nobody will do anything for us. I sent them letters, and this was last year, and again, we opened up the, this, this year, remember? Even when I got on those other piece of property, the same thing this time, I called that lady, and I did, actually this time she, well, you know what's going on to you, I got, and that's, uh, that's what I got.
Well, is there any chance that the village could take, like a four-foot swath off in the front of that? So the grass wouldn't be so close to the sidewalk and stuff? Make it look a little presentable or, or something?
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think we gotta be very careful with that, cause once we start cutting private property, they're gonna open kettle of fish, because they're gonna say, okay, you did it for this property in Pratt Street, and some, some owner of another piece of property doesn't live around here, uh, are we gonna take four-foot swath again, and I understand what you're saying, so, I don't know, anybody else on the board has their feelings on that?
Yeah, I don't think we should start oppressing them, I mean, if, private owner.
That's, that's the problem, it's private-owned property.
How long, how long has it been vacant?
I'm gonna say three years, cause the daughter was living in there, somebody from out back.
Taxes, according to county?
According to county, it's not as of yet.
Nothing. Does it take three years for the county?
And we, and the municipalities used to be able to pass an ordinance where we could go in and cut the property and put it against the taxes. The state no longer allows that to happen, so that's out.
Okay. All righty.
So I guess at this point, the only thing we can do is contact our legal counsel, Mr. Mernane, and see if there's anything he can come up with.
Okay, uh, is there any chance we could have, uh, the village crew fix the urinal at the fire station that's still leaking?
They should be all fixed, they bought, um, John bought the kit to fix it. It's still leaking?
The park just came in Friday.
Oh, it just came in, okay.
The park just came in Friday.
Okay, cause I know I was in there tonight, and it was still leaking when I flushed it, so.
I know they did order a park, but I didn't know if it came in yet, so if you.
Yeah, well, he said it come in, so, okay, and.
Tomorrow.
Uh, the front of the station, are we gonna paint that this year, you think, the, the letters and stuff and the beam?
Well, you can give me a couple good dry days, we can get it painted. The weather, way it is right now, I mean, it's virtually impossible, but it is on the calendar to get done.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And the last thing I have is down to the bathrooms on the boat lounge. I went down there and looked at that, and I'll tell you what, I wouldn't even go in there and go to the bathroom. That's how bad it is. I mean, there's cobwebs all over the place and stuff, I mean, if you went down there, isn't, isn't that, you can just hook up a hose and spray the inside down?
Well, they have a pressure washer where they should be able to pressure wash it.
The outside, there's so many spiders on the outside, I mean, I don't know why anybody would even wanna go in there. Okay, you know, I mean, I'm not scared of spiders or nothing, but, I mean, it's, it's terrible. Especially on the inside, the same thing. And there's no toilet paper in there or nothing. I don't know if they. And there's no toilet paper in there or nothing. I don't know if they put toilet paper in there or not, I don't know.
Well, there's, we buy, buy the great big rolls now. What happened about a week ago is somebody went in, did you see the big, uh, dispensers?
Yep.
Somebody opened the dispenser, took the great big roll of toilet paper out and just scattered it all over the place, plugged this thing through it on the ceilings. Um, so they made a mess of it, uh, Dan told me.
Well, they're probably trying to kill the spiders in there. I don't know.
Well, at the end of the day, I wanna say, I wanna make this clear, Trustee Arnold. Both the administrator and I have spoke to those, the two individuals that are doing that and we've told them not just that bathroom, but all bathrooms should be pressure washed and cleaned on a routine, regular basis. Because of what goes on between the, the, the young girls, young boys, and the adult choosing it. And, uh, my understanding, we were told that that was happening.
That's correct.
So I'm a little surprised what you're telling me, but I will make a effort to see those two workers tomorrow.
No, I'll tell you about...
When was that any?
What's that?
When, when, when did you go down to the boat lounge bathrooms?
Last Saturday.
Last Saturday?
Yep. Mr. Cooper, is that one you told me?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, last Saturday. Like I said, there was cobwebs, so many cobwebs in there, I mean, you couldn't even see, I mean, you couldn't hardly see the ceiling. I mean, it, it was pathetic.
Okay, they should be checked daily and cleaned.
They aren't supposed to be checked.
Yeah, I mean, even if they had a hose down there, just a whole hose off the ceiling and stuff like that, or a broom, stuck a broom in there and went around. You know, but the outside is, is terrible. I'll tell you that too. I mean, it's ridiculous.
We, the, what I mean, we, myself and the administrator have gone to the rec center, talked to the employees. We've tried to get them to do routine maintenance, changing oil, changing spark plugs, cleaning the machines after the, cutting the lawns, cleaning the bathrooms with the pressure washer. We've indicated in the, have sheets, they indicate when they do these jobs so they, we know when they're doing it and so on and so forth. And, uh, you can add anything you want, Mr. Administrator. I, I, I'm at a, I'm at a loss to know this is not being done. This isn't, uh, I've talked to these individuals a couple different times now and I'm a little disappointed, to say the least. But we will talk to them again tomorrow.
That's one of the first things they're supposed to do, check every morning or...
Exactly, and that's exactly the way, the administrator just said it, that's the way it was worded to the two employees. But we will talk to them again.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Anything else, nothing?
That's all I have, Mr. Menard.
Thank you. Trustee Menard?
Uh, nothing yet this time.
Okay, uh, Trustee Pelkey?
Okay, on the agenda, um, I have under there purchase a new skid steer with attachments for Public Works. Just to give you a little background on this, is last year's budget, they put in for a skid steer and, um, of course, we couldn't afford it. Well, through review, we found out that whatever we spend in our CHIPS money, that's the money we give back from paving, we can buy equipment, because if you don't use all the CHIPS money, eventually you start losing it. So what we found out is for what we did in Blacktop, what we do in Blacktop every year, this CHIPS money keeps adding up, eventually you're gonna start decreasing it if you don't spend it. So we found out that if you, you can spend this money in buying a piece of equipment. So this would not come out of general fund, out of taxpayers' money, this would come out of the CHIPS money. And, um, to me, it's a no-brainer where you could take and use this money to replace a piece of equipment that is twenty-two years old that they tried to replace last year. So if we can, if we can turn this around and get this deal where we can replace the skid steer and the, and they'll pay for the attachments that go along with it, anything to do with Blacktop.
Right.
So the grinder that we have to do the rebates is also twenty-two years old. It was bought at the same time as the machine.
Yeah.
So what we could do is use our CHIPS money to purchase a new grinder and a new skid steer and we wouldn't have to budget it, because next year, we're gonna have to budget, what we're planning to do is budget more money for a plow truck. Because we know our plow truck is over twenty years old, so within the next two years, we'd like to have enough money to buy a plow truck. So if we can buy this piece of equipment that replaces a twenty-three-year-old or twenty-two-year-old piece of equipment, we'll be good for another twenty, hopefully another twenty, twenty-two years.
And, uh, just one other thing, could you just briefly explain to the public what we use a skid steer for?
Um, this skid steer is used in the spring for all the cleanup, all the brooms go on it, where they, they pick all the sand up. This is a special, um, high-flow skid steer where you can use, uh, hydraulics that take a lot of demand. So they can use it on the pusher for pushing pipes under, under the road. You can use it for the grinder for the rebates for when they do all the blacktopping. They can use it to load equipment, they use it for snow removal, so it's, it, it's a vital piece of equipment, yeah.
And, and like you said, it's twenty-two years old and we gotta get in the habit of replacing our equipment a lot sooner than that so we can get a trade-in value for it, plus keep it operational.
Right, and with the trade-in value, if you look at the quote, I mean, they break it right down and, uh, I mean, the, they call it a high-flow coal planer, that's that grinder. And we have enough, almost enough money to purchase this, this whole thing. I think we're short, uh, twelve, twelve hundred dollars? Twelve hundred dollars short, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna surplus the grinder that we have and we'll sell it and then we'll have the extra money.
Even the skid steer?
Yeah, well, the skid steer is in part of the deal. They don't, they don't want, they don't want the grinder, because they're so high maintenance that...
Yeah.
But you will get a contractor that will bid on.
Yeah.
So how does the board feel about this idea of...
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Definitely, we're getting a good piece of equipment and it's gonna be a bigger skid steer.
Yeah, so a bigger skid steer, a little heavier.
Yeah.
Like I said, we, we tried to budget it last year and we didn't have enough money. We, we couldn't do it.
Yeah.
So this is a very good option that we look into, that if they're left, they're gonna let us use our CHIPS money or lose it. I think we should use it.
Yeah, definitely.
They'll definitely wanna eat the CHIPS money.
Yeah, as, uh, the administrator and myself were on the phone and, uh, what you said was absolutely correct. I think this is the time to, to buy it, uh, with, with, between the trade-in value and the need for it. We've got no better time than to get this piece of equipment now. Mr. Southwick, you got anything? Well, Mr. Southwick, I'm making...
I agree, it's a no-brainer and I think it's a great idea to go through CHIPS with this.
Yeah, Mr. Menard?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Uh, we don't wanna lose our CHIPS money, that's all.
No, no, 'cause we're gonna end up losing some of it each year if we don't spend it.
And I'll make a motion that we purchase a new skid steer and the attachments for the Public Works Department.
I'll second it.
Mr. Latchmore, would you have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty?
Aye, the ayes have it, we'll purchase this, and I'm sure the guys in the work crew will be very happy to have their new piece of equipment.
Just to indicate the amount, Mr. Mayor, not to exceed...
Oh, oh...
Not to exceed the seventy-three thousand...
Seventy-three thousand two hundred dollars.
Should you make a motion to, to, um, declare that other piece surplus?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to declare the old grinder, uh, coal planer as surplus.
I'll second.
All those in favor of, of, of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Can we, uh, can we put that on the website or something?
Well, there's, um, there's, there's companies that New York State uses, that's an, um, auction company and it goes out to everybody throughout the whole country that can bid on it.
Cool.
And we can set, um, um...
Minimum bid.
A minimum bid, and I had Adam checking with Randy to see, you know, what does that unit worth?
Okay, perfect.
Sounds good.
Anything else, Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, uh, just an update on the curving on Trana Drive. They got one side poured. We're working, of course, the weather is a big factor. It's all formed up, ready to be mowed, so that street will be blacktop next year. It's on the, it's on the list of when the streets will be done. So that's a little holdup there. Um, they also have a project coming up where they're gonna be paving the pass back here along the tennis court and the stone area behind the soccer net or the baseball field. So they rented a small paver and it's in the budget and they're gonna be taking care of that within the next couple weeks. So it'd be nice to get these paths cleaned up where, there's a lot of people walking these paths. And the ones along the building here are a little uneven, so they're gonna straighten that all out. I think it'll be a...
And, uh, just to follow, the administrator and I checked on some of those wooden bridges that we crossed. I think, did we, are we gonna replace the whole bridge or are we gonna just replace some of the wood?
So what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna be taking the bridges out, putting culvert in the, uh, in the ditch, put some fill and then pave right over top of it. That way we won't have to worry about it.
It's sinking and the boards are rotting. We're just gonna have to continuously do this.
No maintenance that way.
That's right.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have the, um, the pave come right out to the ground of driveway.
Anything else, Ryan?
That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, Trustee Southwick?
The village has recently submitted a grant for a new water plant, so hopefully that'll be approved. And I did see that some members of the public were asking about, uh, the return of live meetings. I'm probably the only one on the board that knows what goes into that and I can tell you that that would roughly, just in equipment alone, cost about like over two thousand dollars and we have hometown cable that comes up the next day. So I think, obviously, keep as much money in the village as possible, so it's a nice idea, but...
I, I think for these...
Meetings are always open to the public?
Of course.
That's your...
People did address, did bring it up and myself was important to address it.
There, there may not be some people physically able to make our meetings, but they are televised within seventy-two hours or ninety-six hours, so, uh, there's not like they have to wait weeks and weeks to see it. I, I think Mr. Southwick, uh, hit the nail on the head. We have a, a lot of places that we need to spend our money on wisely, uh, and at this point, I don't think this would be able to spend our money. Anything else, Trustee Southwick? Okay?
I have one other thing.
Okay, Trustee Arnold?
On, uh, the truck that John Menard drives around and stuff like that, that, I think that's a disgrace to the village. That, that's an awful thing. And not only that, the, the transmission is just a love shot on it. And he was telling me today that transmission would probably cost about twenty-seven hundred if he fixed it and stuff.
Okay.
But, yeah. Take it off the road, I think, or something, I mean...
Well, the plan was, eventually, was the electric department, when they receive a new pickup truck, Johnny would get that one. So I don't know where we're at and the status of the budget, if that was budgeted this year?
It is budgeted, so if that's something that the village board wants to proceed forward with, the electric department, then we can do that.
Well, I think we should. I mean, that's a disgrace for that truck to be driving on the street. I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, there's so much rust on it and fenders are falling off in it just about and...
If it's a budgeted item, I mean, somebody should be doing a set of specs on it.
That's right.
And trying to get us, you know, the best prices right now. And, and to see what exactly we need.
That's the key. Let's not do overkill, let's just get what we need and not overspend.
Right.
And something we're gonna use.
Bare bone, you know, you don't need a fancy, you know, a big fancy truck. It's something that they use every day and it gets used. And if you could take and upgrade, if there was money in the electric department to upgrade, um, their pickup and to give, the plan was to give John Menard the electric department pickup, that would be the way to go. And then you can get rid of that oh-nine floor that John's driving around. I know there's problems with it, correct?
Yeah, the passenger side floor, you gotta step over, because there's a hole about this big, it's just the carpet.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's not, it's not a safe truck to be on the road, 'cause somebody should be bringing us a set of specs.
Yeah.
Well, we'll talk to John in the morning.
Okay, anything else?
Are you ahead of the streets?
That'd be the electric department though.
Oh.
God bless America. Mr. Cooper, you have anything you wanna bring to the board?
The only thing I gotta say is when we do this contract for that environmental thing, that's gonna go to Mernane first, right?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, anybody from the public wanna address the board or Mr. Latchmore?
I just wanted to let the board be aware that the fifty-six thousand dollars that you voted to spend on the fire station, that's coming out of the American Rescue Plan funds. I bet you should know that.
Right, because that was not budgeted.
That's correct.
Because, um, unfortunately, roof leaked and it was brought to our attention after the budget that it was... It had a bad leak.
Yeah.
And that's why, um...
Yeah, that was around the Fourth of July or so.
Well, that's why the mayor brought it up at the last meeting. I was supposed to bring it up when I was a president, so, um...
The, but my understanding is it's been leaking for some time, but it's, it's got worse.
Been worse, because the, the age of the roof.
Right, and, you know, this is another situation like we had in the rec center. It, we, the, it was leaking, it continued to get worse, it was just gonna deteriorate the property we own. The fire department's an important part of the village. We need to put this roof on and, uh, we're gonna do it.
But we're lucky that we have this money that is gonna be spent very well.
That's right, that's right.
It doesn't have to, it goes to a good use.
That's right.
It's not being squandered, it's being used, that something has to be taken care of. I mean, our center did a good job on keeping our budget straight.
Our EMS service and our fire service is very important to our village. Anything else, uh, anybody wants to bring up? No? If not, then I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, gentlemen.